All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 5:04 PM and acknowledge our meeting's status. We are meeting in person. Some members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. The board will not take public comment through the online platform, and we cannot guarantee online streaming should that platform malfunction for any reason. Blame whoever the CEO of Zoom is, not us. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with our board president, Maddie Cloud, at mcloud@petk12.org if not able to attend in person. We'll move on to comments from the public on closed session items, and there is no public. So I will adjourn us to closed session until 6:00 PM. Dave, I'm going to reconvene our meeting at 6:02, and trustee Pawn will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And we have no report on action taken in closed session because we did not take any action in closed session. So we'll move on to special recognitions, reports, and presentations, starting with our site report from Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain. Is that you guys? Awesome.
Hello, my name is Bo Keefe, and I'm a senior at Sonoma Mountain High School. This is my third year attending SOMO after starting at the beginning of my sophomore year in 2022. After my projected graduation in June, I will be pursuing a career as an electrician. Here are some of the things we've been up to at Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain High School since we last presented to the board in January. Last June, we held our alternative education graduation ceremony on the Casa Grande football field for the fourth consecutive year. Both Carpe Diem and Sonoma Mountain participated along with graduates from San Antonio and Valley Oaks. Diverse and inspirational stories were shared. The all-ed ceremony is truly unique graduation, and I hope all those who have not attended get a chance to at some point. In August, we once again started with a welcome week for all students at both schools. On the first day, both schools gathered at the Phoenix Theater for our traditional dual-school opening day, where we practiced in community-building activities led by our teachers, including a walk to Oak Hill Park and a paper airplane building contest. As always, we'd like to thank Tom Gaffey for allowing us free use of the theater. If you haven't been to the Phoenix, you should check it out. It certainly stands out as a special Petaluma landmark. Both schools have undergone a number of changes this year. Most notably, we have a new full-time principal, Mr. Mori, and a new science and art teacher, Dr. Rivers. Our first full-time science teacher in two years. They have brought decades of classroom experience to our school. Carpe Diem started the year with nineteen students. They've had seven graduates thus far, and currently have nineteen students enrolled for the spring semester. They have five seniors and one junior expected to graduate in June. Sonoma Mountain started the year with twenty-two students, and we've had three graduates so far. We still have twenty-two students with three projected graduates, including myself, one of which is a junior. It is also worth noting that amongst our small student population, we have students from all four grade levels and all five other high school programs: PHS, CGHS, Valley Oaks, Valley Oaks Online, and San Antonio High School, as well as three freshmen who started at SOMO this year straight from middle school, including my brother Luke. This highlights the diversity of our students' educational backgrounds and experiences which brought them here. One of the draws of attending our school is that we have the opportunity to participate in activities and events at the bigger high schools, including senior activities, sports, clubs, and electives. Sonoma Mountain has two students currently co-enrolled, one in robotics and one in culinary, as well as five students enrolled in clubs and one student planning on participating in sports in the spring. At Carpe Diem, we just graduated a student who was on the baseball team, as well as having another student planning on playing sports and multiple students in clubs. In class, we have been very busy. In English, we have studied the Beat Generation and have now moved on to a unit focused on global sustainability and waste. History has included a deep dive into the social movements of the 1960s, including a three-week-long research essay where we explored one of the events or groups in detail, such as the Black Panther Party, occupation of Alcatraz, and the Stonewall uprising. In science, we have completed two separate student-led research projects units, testing hypotheses, and math has kept us busy with a blend of Math 1 and 2 concepts. In our electives, we have enjoyed old favorites like basketball and PE, while also trying new stuff out in our, including our current stop-motion projects, which we will be wrapping up with a movie night at our school within the next few weeks. We also go on hikes several times per semester. Hikes this year include our opening hike at Tennessee Valley Beach in Mill Valley, a trip to China Camp in San Rafael, and the trip to the Academy of Science in San Francisco. These trips help show us many riches afforded to us in the area, as well as help build community and expose students to the various recreational and vocational outdoors locations that we enjoy in this area. Staff is busy planning more trips for the spring semester, including one that was planned for this Friday but had to be canceled due to rain. Seven students have also participated in the farms program with Dr. Rivers. The students, along with teachers and students from surrounding areas, visited local farms and agricultural facilities. The goal is to gain better understanding of the local agriculture practices being utilized right here in Sonoma County. Our other traditions include the return of our Welcome Back Senior Breakfast in August, where seniors cook breakfast for the school, as well as our Fall Break Feast at both schools before the break in November. Students brought plates, and turkey was provided by staff. We convened again the day before winter break where we ate together with ham and tri-tip provided by Mr. Anderson, and exchanged gifts. We also have maintained community circles on Wednesdays, which provides other ways to build community and work through things that come up throughout the school year. These are important traditions, new and old, for establishing the inclusive family atmosphere that we pride ourselves on at our small school sites. Lastly, I'd like to say a few words about my school. First of all, it is a friendly, welcoming environment. Before SOMO, I had issues with personal conflicts and other students that prevented me from learning and often stopped me from coming to school. Here, it is easier to get work done with less distractions. Work is accessible but challenging. Teachers are always nearby and easy to get help from on a one-to-one basis. I feel that I could work at a pace that works for me and is a school that you actually want to show up to. I feel like I know the teachers well, and there is a mutual respect. I'm very grateful that I had the chance to start here when I was fifteen. Thank you for your time and for your continued support for our small alternative schools.
Very nice. Thank you so much for coming and presenting to us and everything y'all have been up to. Tennessee Valley is like my favorite hike in the North Bay, so I'm glad you all got to do that. Any questions or comments from anybody? Yeah.
I just want to say one of the highlights was watching his parents or supporters, guardians here, as he was presenting. That was like a highlight for me, just watching how proud they were of him. So cheers to you guys for being here. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to comments from the public on special recognition reports, presentations, and non-agendized items. So if you have any public comment on anything not on the agenda or on the wonderful report we just had, now would be your time. I'm gonna read the part about public comment really quickly while we're here. I don't know how quickly. Under Government Code Section 5495-4, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. That is right now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during discussion of those items. We value public comment, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we do listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute-per-person limit or a twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Commenters may not cede their time to others. So if you have a public comment on anything not on the agenda, please bring your card up to the wonderful Bree, and she will bring the card over to me, and I will make sure we call on you. And if you have public comment on something on the agenda still, please bring your card up to Bree, and we will get to your public comment when it is that time. But seeing none and seeing no one rushing the stage, I'm gonna move on. Nope, maybe? Nope? Yeah, that's for on the agenda and later, yeah. All right. So we'll move on to adoption and approval of the agenda. Can I ask, before I hear a motion, will someone move? We want to do the staff report about the budget reduction before public comment, because I think it might quell a lot of concern. So can someone move comments after? It can still be before we discuss as a board, but...
So that'd be item nineteen before item eighteen? All right, so motion to approve the agenda with the edit that item nineteen goes for item eighteen.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, now we are on reports on activities and correspondence of school board members. So since our last meeting, trustees attended Casa Grande basketball games, the Sonoma County Office of Education trustee recognition dinner, the NAACP's Community Centers grand opening, a Safe Routes to School mid-year check-in at Petaluma Junior, and meetings with the superintendent, and office hours at McNear Elementary, Pengrove, McKinley PAX, Kennelworth Junior High, and Valley Vista. Do any of the adult trustees have anything they want to say about any of these events? All right. And then next up, we have report on activities and correspondence of student board members who are equally busy. Actually, their paragraph is longer, so I think they might have been busier. Student board members attended Petaluma High's Club Rush, a Petaluma High girls' soccer game, the Petaluma High girls' basketball senior night, a Petaluma High PTSA meeting, the Petaluma High Sweethearts Dance, and Trojans quarterly practices, National Honor Society meetings at Casa Grande, senior nights for Casa Girls Basketball and Casa Girls Soccer. And at Casa, the Positivity Project has spoken to about half of the freshman class at Casa about mental health and substance abuse, and looks forward to educating the next half next week. As our only student trustee here tonight, do you have anything you want to share about any of that?
What's the Posity Project?
That's AVA's. That's AVA's club, so...
I think it's like mental health awareness, the students.
All right. Now we'll move on to a public hearing, and I get to use the gavel again. I'm officially opening the public hearing for the naming of the new Public Waldorf School to be located at the campus of Valley Vista. Now is the time for any public comments on this matter. I'm gonna check and see. None of what I have right now is that, so if you have any public comment on the naming of the charter school at Valley Vista, now's your time to bring a card up. I'll wait, I promise. All right, I'm gonna call Becky up, and you'll have three minutes. I'll wait for Dave to get the stuff started.
So this is kind of spontaneous, I'm not actually here for this. However, my daughter did attend Valley Vista last year, and we just had the idea of Valley Oak, which is kind of a blend of both names and also a treasured local native oak tree that the Pomo people used as a life source with their acorns. So just sharing that idea.
Thank you so much. We have a school called Valley Oaks already, so that, yeah. No, I had that thought too. It was a great, yeah. Thank you. All right, any other public comment about that? If not, I will gavel again very officially to close the public hearing. We'll have a good gavel, and we'll move on to this action item under Ed Services, approval of the name for the Waldorf Charter School to be located on the campus of Valley Vista.
I move to approve.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, can we get a presentation and a little more information?
Yes, I'm excited to invite Jamie and Linda up to present some background information on the process and how they got to this name, and turn it over to Jamie to take us away.
Hey, good evening. I'm Jamie Wishman. I'm the current principal here at Valley Vista. And, thank you. And I want to introduce you to Linda. Go ahead.
Hi there, Linda Delgado, current executive director at Live Oak Charter School.
And we are excited to share with you the process that we've been going through for the last little bit.
Okay, so the timeline, these are wonderful data across the bottom of the slide, but I have to tell you that in every case, it has been expanded. For example, from fourteen tours, we're now up to sixteen. Three EL tours for English language learners, twenty-eight staff meetings is now thirty. Fifteen community events, two staff trips plus one, and forty-five. Is that forty-five? Yeah, forty-five parent square messages and counting, and we're now up to four hundred forty-six applications.
So not too much happening. In talking about the renaming process, we really wanted to take some time and get, you know, considering this as a community event, one of the pieces that we shared is that although we're creating the school and thinking about the students that we currently have and love, that this is also a big undertaking as we're thinking about the school that will serve generations to come. So community input was really important to us. We had two big nights that were very well-attended by, well, it was about a hundred people in the Valley Vista multi on night one and night two. And then on the third night, we had a committee together to really narrow down and get our suggestion, which we're bringing to you today.
So among the groups that made the final decision, we had three from representing Valley Vista. We had three representing Live Oak. We had one district administrator. And we'd like to thank our facilitators, Babs Kavanaugh and Luanne for coming out.
All right, so the process, really, we started with, back at like night two. We started with some small groups to build consensus, and then slowly grew those groups, building consensus each time, so starting with like a group of eight, building up to sixteen, and on and on from there. For the final naming selection, we had about four top contenders at the end of night two. And our committee came together, and it was really a beautiful night, I have to say. The conversation, the honesty, the listening from all sides, it was just a moment. I don't know, for me, as like someone who's been on this journey for a while, there was a healing piece of it to like get to come together and really find, like come to this decision. So we had a whole voting process for them as we narrowed it down, until we came to two frontrunners, and finally building consensus on just one.
Now I think we need a drum roll.
Yes.
Excellent. The winner is? Valley Vista Public Waldorf.
Yeah, yes, let's do that.
Yes. Oh, just to thank everybody for giving us this opportunity. We're really excited to partner with the district and looking forward to the years ahead.
Yeah, and thanks again to all of our committee members who were brave enough to take that space, to be kind of in the deciding circle. I think, you know, this started out as a really hot topic item, and through this process and this conversation, and these brave members willing to take on the task, there's been ease about it. I think like a little like breathing space now that the decision's done. So we appreciate all the time of parents who came out, the students who were involved in some of these conversations, and our facilitators.
Amazing. Thank you all, and thank you to all the committee members and everyone that was a part of that process. Are there any questions or comments from any of the trustees? Yeah, I think it's a beautiful merging of the two, and keeps Valley Vista's legacy going on, because that's what we heard so much from the community, is how much they love Valley Vista and how much Valley Vista has meant to them. So that name getting to live on in that way while still owning and incorporating the wonderful Waldorf aspect and how it's a public Waldorf, and how important that is in our community, is really great. So the motion is on the table. I'm gonna call the question. All in favor of approving the name? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we have our new name. Congratulations. And now we'll move on to comments from the public on consent agenda items. So these are any items under number fifteen. Please bring up a blue sheet if you haven't already, if you have anything for the consent agenda. All right, seen none. We'll move on to approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
A second.
All right, now that it's on the table, are there any comments or questions from any trustees about anything on our really short consent agenda? I like a, I like a short little bit. It's the usual suspects. All right, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. So we'll move on to comments from the public on action items. So if you have public comment on any of the items under action items, which is number seventeen, again, please bring up one of these fun little blue cards to Bree or Luanne, and they will get it over to me. Right now, none of the cards I have are on those items. Seeing no one rushing the stage, I will move on to action items, starting with approval of Resolution 2425-30 about needed credentials and certificates to be skipped in the layoff process. Do I hear a motion?
Sorry, Caitlin, can I have a point of order? Can we have a presentation on the items first and then move to a motion? So I think we just call the item, and then staff can present, and then we can...
Perfect. Cool. I'll call the first one up, and can we get a presentation?
Yeah, so this first resolution, we bring these versions of this resolution forward every year in preparation for our layoffs. And it just identifies that there are certain positions and credentials that are more critical and that those positions would be skipped in the layoff process with regards to seniority.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions on this resolution? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, Resolution 2425-30 passes. Moving on to Resolution 2425-31, anything from staff to add to that that is markedly super different?
No, you read this. This is just so that we can state how we will identify if people have the same seniority date, how to break those ties and determine order for if there are layoffs for certificated positions.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of passing Resolution 2425-31, please say aye. All right, that resolution also passes, and we will move on to approval of Resolution 2425-32. All right, Jason, tell us what this one's about.
So earlier this year, we approved the calendar for next school year, and that calendar took some federal holidays and moved them, so we're celebrating them on a different date. So this resolution talks specifically about Admission Day being moved with Thanksgiving to give our families a bigger Thanksgiving holiday.
And this is another one we do every year, pretty much. I've never celebrated Admission Day on the day that it was intended to be celebrated on, so can I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
A second.
All in favor of Resolution 2425-32? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, Resolution 2425-32 passes. Moving on to Resolution 2425-33, Jason, tell us about this one.
So just like the previous one, this one is where we move Lincoln's, the celebration of Lincoln's holiday. So the President's Day and Lincoln's holiday are together, and it's part of that week-long mid-winter break that we pair, which we're going into next week, that we pair with our emergency closure days.
Right. Any questions or comments on that one?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of approving Resolution 2425-33, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, Resolution 2425-33 passes, and we will move on to approval of assignments outside of credential area. Can you tell us about this one as well?
So this is the final one of one that we do every year. We tried to put a lot of information in the description because it is somewhat complicated, but we do have a number of teaching positions that teachers are holding that might be outside of their credential area, but we determine as a district and as a board that they have expertise that warrants that, and so this is the process to approve that, which is, we're just following the guidelines that we're supposed to follow to approve those. And if you looked in the packet, there were a couple of different categories that they would fall in. This is pretty, we do this every year with a large number of our assignments because we have some different programs that require some alternative ways to staff them.
And to be clear for the folks watching at home, these are all credentialed teachers.
They are all credentialed teachers, and yes, they are.
Perfect. Any questions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
A second.
All in favor of approving assignments outside of credential area, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we've approved the assignments outside of the credential area, and we'll move on to Ed Services with our overnight field trip requests. Tony, what do you want to tell us about these field trip requests?
Yeah, these are, all the elementary are pretty much the annual field trips that they take every year. And then the other one was the World Mass Competition, where in the event that they do qualify, they want to be ahead of it and prepare for that trip. I know that we've had conversations around the forms, and we are currently updating them, and hopefully we'll be able to finalize them, but without trying to hold up some of these field trips that have just, you know, that they submit every year, we didn't want to hold these up, but we do plan to review the new kind of form to address some of the challenges and concerns we've had in previous meetings.
Any questions or comments about any of the field trips? All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
A second.
All in favor of approving the overnight field trip request, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we've passed or approved the overnight field trip request, and we'll move on to Business Services, Review of Bond Management RFP/Q. Amanda, I think this is all you.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we bring...
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we bring forward a draft of an RFPQ for a request for qualifications for a bond program management services for the implementation of measures A, A, and Z. There are numerous reasons why staff recommends that we go with a program manager for our new bond. The reasons include hiring bond management firm eliminates long-term salary benefits and pension costs associated with additional full-time staff. A professional firm provides specialized expertise in bond management programs, ensuring efficient planning, execution, and oversight. The firm brings experience in compliance, reducing legal risks and ensuring adherence to state and federal requirements. External management firms have established processes to prevent cost overruns, delays, mismanagement of funds. A dedicated firm provides scalable resources, adjusting staffing levels as needed without overburdening the district's payroll. So we pay for what we need at any given year that we need it. Firms are known to streamline communication and coordination between contractors, architects, and district stakeholders. Outsourcing management allows the district to focus on pri, our primary mission, which is education, while the experts handle construction complexities. And this helps with voter confidence in the bond program. It is reinforced through structured oversight, regular reporting, and transparent financial tracking.
Any questions or comments on the RFQ or the RFQ process? It makes a lot of sense to me. And I assume the dates will be added into the document once this would be approved.
Yes, so this will still be approved as a draft, so we can make those final changes and we will have legal review at one final time before we put it out. The goal is to have this out in spring and bring back a qualified firm to the board in early April, which will help us with implementation of the new bonds.
Great, that's faster than I thought it would be. Any questions?
What have we previously done for the other bonds that have been passed for the school district?
Prior to the 2014 bonds, the district did work with a program manager. And then at the implementation at some point with the 2014 bonds, a couple of years in, that firm, the district decided to no longer work with them and it was managed in-house by the CBO and the capital facilities construction manager.
All right, I, do I hear a motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the bond management RFP slash Q draft passes and we'll move on to Student Services with the approval of comprehensive school safety plan. So Esmeralda, can you tell us a little bit about this as a whole?
Sure. So annually, we bring our comprehensive school safety plans. And so per ed code, we are required to develop a plan on an annual basis at each one of our campuses. So what you have included here are each school's plan with redacted portions that are specific to technical procedures at the school site. The school's emergency plan with those incident command, emergency plans, in addition to all of the education code, board policy that's required. So you may have seen it in three parts. That's at the beginning with the emergency plans second. And then each school also has a culture and climate plan. So we're bringing forth those plans for each one of our school sites tonight for your approval.
All right, does anyone have any comments or questions on the plans as a whole or in any individual plans?
I have a question about the CASA plan. So it mentions North Bay security a few times, but only in the realm of emergency preparedness. But as a parent, I got an email that North Bay was going to be on-site more. But it went into more detail about ensuring the presence of a security representative on our campuses each day. And rotating across campuses, serving as an additional trusted adult presence for our students. And then it talked about this being a proactive measure as part of safety protocol, but I don't see that in the safety plan.
Yes, so excellent question. So in, so North Bay has been our consultant in terms of developing our safety plans and training staff. That started in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Mid-year, we brought forth a proposal for increasing a contract with, that was in December, I believe. And we brought that forth to have a daily presence with one North Bay security, security consultant. And so that started mid-year. And so it's a, it's a district plan or approach. And so our safety plans, many of our safety plans were approved by Site Council prior to that being instituted. And so that is a measure that we're putting forth there. They have a presence at all of our secondary campuses, checking in with all of our site administrators, and then also checking in with our elementary sites. And they are supporting us in a variety of ways, not only being a consultant for any kind of issue that arises where we're determining, do we need to also call law enforcement? How do we approach this? As well as helping us with residency verifications, as well as chronic absenteeism. And so we've had situations where actually we've had an increase in our students actually coming back to school with having that check-in and supporting and having that follow-through between the school and our North Bay representative. And so it's a pilot that is, we'll go through the end of this school year and then we'll evaluate it and see if we will continue. So it's in addition to the contract that we had with them and they were just training our staff. And, and, and this is an additional presence on the campuses every day with one security consultant.
What is residency verification?
So, for example, if we've had situations where we've had someone maybe put down a residence that may not be where they actually live and they may need an introductory transfer. And so going out to do a home visit and making sure, and if not, making sure that we have the correct forms and paperwork so that we can support and have accuracy with our attendance.
And North Bay is doing this?
With me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't know if I feel comfortable with them. I would feel more comfortable with like one of our staff people doing that.
Yeah.
Because they sound like the police. Just like, you know, and we're not supposed to be doing that. So that, that's why I, that gives me some pause. It's like an officer shows up to verify your residence.
Yeah.
So thank you for clarifying that. But then they said something about like being a trusted adult. What is, what is that?
So, and in the event there needs to, there's like a, so they're trained in restorative practices, de-escalation techniques. So there's, our administrators take the lead with any kind of discipline. They're not in the realm of disciplining any students. But if there is mentoring or supports, you know, checking in with the student that may need that kind of support, but not in the realm of any kind of discipline, follow-up, or any kind of referral process, that is all managed by our administrators.
Who determines what residencies need to be proved or disproved?
That would be my, that, that would be if it came to my attention and we had any reason that someone was providing a residence and actually they were not residing that, they resided outside of our district.
And then what about the chronic absenteeism? How are they helping with that?
So if we have a student that is, isn't attending school and there are no show for many, many, many days, maybe not responding to phone calls, they can make a quick call and say, hey, is everything okay? We'd love to see you at school. And we've had cases, for example, where students actually then begin showing up and are like, this is, you know, great, thanks for making, making the visit. But it's sort of like that wellness check. And we'd love to see you at school.
Okay. Okay. I, I don't know how I feel about that. So maybe that's something we can revisit. We can talk about that for like future business because like when I looked on their website, they look like the police. So like, I mean, I don't know how comfortable I feel with them. Like Ellen was asking a really good question about, you know, them going to people's homes and then like making calls for chronic absenteeism. I guess I would want to know what type of training that they've had and like what they're saying to families.
Certainly, certainly. Yeah. And just to emphasize, it's a pilot. It's just something we're doing till the end of the year. It's something we're looking at. And I think as we looked at fall and the needs that were occurring at our school sites and situations that we had on our campuses, having an additional security consultant, we thought would be very beneficial. And so, but again, it's something that we're evaluating and we can certainly come back and discuss this more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would definitely agree talking more about it in the future because if it's like an armed person coming to check, I mean, I'm sure they're not, but it's just the, the feeling of the uniformed person coming to check on your attendance versus more of a social worker feeling. I mean, CPS has its own issues too, but it's a little different than a cop showing up at your door.
Yeah, definitely meant to be supportive, but yes, absolutely.
Any other questions on any of the safety? Yes, school safety plans. All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
I second.
All in favor of approving the twenty-four, twenty-five comprehensive school safety plans, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the safety plans have been approved. And now this is the part where we moved the agenda around a little bit. So we'll go to the discussion information items and really quickly, can we go over the board meeting dates for twenty-five, twenty-six?
Great, thank you so much. So what we have tonight is up for just discussion to look at the board meeting dates for our coming school year. And a couple of things I want to, a couple of thoughts to share with the trustees. I would just ask for you to confirm or just offer up, is there a better day for the trustees? We have a new trustee on the board. Do Tuesdays still work for everyone? Is there a different day, which probably would have to be a Wednesday, a Tuesday or Wednesday? You really can't do Monday, Thursday, or Friday. So there may be a recommendation there. And the second item that I would just put out there for your consideration is just considering having one board meeting a month and perhaps a second on the calendar for a study session, if that is the pleasure of the board, instead of doing two board meetings a month. And that may be something that you're not interested in doing. You want to stay with two board meetings a month. And of course, we're super respectful of that. So I just leave it to the board to discuss what your recommendations might be and we can bring back a calendar for your approval at the next board meeting.
Anyone have questions or? At this point, I'm, I like Tuesdays. It's been six years. Tuesdays are. But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to changing to Wednesdays. I just wouldn't want to do Mondays because city council meets on Mondays. That's my only thing. I wouldn't be opposed to moving to one meeting a month. But I would imagine there will be plenty of times where we will need two meetings a month with timing of all the different things that come out. So curious to hear other folks' thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I'm interested in moving to Wednesdays. And it's because we have several other local jurisdictions that have Tuesday meetings as well and it just piles on top of one another. We want to make sure that we have access to the public and our constituents and to parents and teachers, making sure that they are able to attend. And so it's something that I would like to discuss and see how that would work and then also, you know, figure out if it's the second and fourth, first and third, or just the third week. And then as needed, you know, we have something else, something of that sort. So I do want to see like what the different schedules could, could potentially look like.
Although we've been meeting on Tuesdays for forever, so I don't know, maybe you've heard, but I've never had anybody complain to me that there's too many meetings on Tuesdays and they can't make this one. I've been on the board for nine years now. So I'd like to keep it on Tuesdays just because that's the way my life is planned.
What other meetings are on Tuesdays?
Board of Supes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess it would be good to look at our feeder districts when they meet. Because someone might have a kid at Old Adobe and a kid at Pedalama City Schools or a kid in WA and a kid in Pedalama City Schools. So trying not to be on their nights. I don't, yeah, I don't know if they've already been planning around us being on Tuesdays or not. That would be the, that would be more of the other bodies I would want to take into consideration.
Also, a lot of our committee meetings avoid Tuesdays as well and that they've been set already. In fact, tomorrow's LCAP, so, which is a Wednesday. So that would require a, a pretty big shift to reimagine when we'd have committee meetings and all that other stuff.
So thank you for your feedback and with that being said, I think then I'd be interested in seeing if there are a couple of meetings that traditionally we could move around for study sessions and kind of have like more study sessions set onto the schedule. But knowing that like during budget, we have, you know, these are important, like in February and January, probably important to have two meetings, but else, sometimes else in the year where we maybe want to remove one or a, a, a meeting off the, the schedule.
Would, is the Board of Supervisors want some, like what is the date on that in general?
It's, it's not.
Okay, I was just curious about that. And in general, we've had the second Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of the month. So maybe I could connect with our board president and just kind of look at a draft calendar based on this conversation tonight and see if we could bring something back for discussion or approval at the next board meeting. That's okay with the trustees.
Yeah.
One thing about having only one a month is there'd be presentation upon presentation upon presentation upon presentation. Not to mention students of the month. It would make for a really crowded calendar for just once a month.
Sure.
I do like the idea though, if we like, let's say, for example, like October only had one and then reserved the other one for like a special meeting. And then maybe did the same for like March or May, just had one. And then so that way we don't have to schedule like a third meeting potentially in March, but just know that there is a placeholder. Because I feel like we always have such a hard time trying to find like the date for a special session. So I like that idea. Yeah.
Great. So I'll work with you and, and with trustee Quinn and just come up with a calendar. Okay, great. Thank you for the feedback.
Sounds good. All right. Moving on, let's have our presentation on recommendations for budget reduction. And then I will take trustee questions on the presentation, but then I do want to get to public comment before we like move into too much wholehearted discussion.
Great, thank you. You know, I want to start this conversation by just acknowledging the fact that anytime we have to do budget reductions in the fifteen years that I've been a superintendent, it's difficult conversation. It's a hard conversation. And a lot of this is driven by a lot of different factors that come into play. Looking at how we keep our budget balanced so that we don't go into deficit spending. So we could look to see how we want to use our resources to support our labor partners. To look at how we can use outside funding to perhaps help us with our general fund. So we're able to use those funds more effectively. So there's just a lot of thought that goes around this and it's a lot of emotion and it's a complicated topic. It always is. And so I just want to start with that to acknowledge that our trustees, our community, it's tough. It's tough. And this is where we are and I thank the trustees for. Their patience, their understanding, their communication with our community. It makes a difference. So um. Let me go through this and then I am going to, after I present this, I am going to ask the cabinet members to give some specific details as part of my presentation. And then of course, uh, come back to um, trustee Quinn for public comment or clarifications. Alrighty, so um. Our core value, our district employees are dedicated to student success and operate as a high performing collaborative team. And even though I haven't been in Petaluma a long time, I've been to almost every campus. My last camp, campus visit is tomorrow. And it's been really powerful and really wonderful. And just getting into classrooms and seeing the teaching and learning happening. It's just as this core value states, so it's, it's been a treat for me to be here. The timeline for the work that has transpired is we have a budget advisory committee, recommendations have come forward. Um, I'm going to have uh, Amanda talk a little bit about that process. Um, when those recommendations came um, toward to cabinet superintendent Harris, we've been in, in touch with him. Uh, then we have a superintendent recommendation based on the budget advisory committee recommendations. The next step where we are right now is for the board to review and give us direction on next steps. We will come back with a resolution for a reduction in force, uh, particular kinds of service that. Happens at the February twenty-fifth board meeting. And then employee notification. So that is the, the general timeline uh, for our budget reduction process. And the budget advisory committee. I just want everyone to know and acknowledge that this was a committee that spent, they were supposed to spend just two meetings coming up with a recommendation. It took them four meetings because they did the hard work. They asked for reports, they asked for documents. They really wanted to make a recommendation that they felt confident with. And you'll see the recommendations as we move forward were based on a super majority. That's seventy-five percent. I'm looking, is it two-thirds or? Two-thirds, sixty-six point six, whatever that may be. So two-thirds is a super majority. So we have our um, three PFT members, um, three. CSEA members, a classified administrator, uh, three principals and three parents. So. It was a group that really uh, represented our constituents and so. Their voice mattered um, to all of us and receiving this recommendation. So the recommendation is, as you have seen and um. I will go through these and then we'll talk a little bit more about um. Some positions that are becau- be, being covered with grant funding, but you'll see the PAC secretary. Mechanic helpers, um, student advisors, classified positions. Then our certificated um, super substitutes, our visual and performing arts teacher on special assignment. Our science teacher on special assignment. Um, certificated positions and then our management positions, um, coordinator, principal, um. For our uh, two alternative high schools, coordinator, communication coordinator, career technical. Uh, education, CTE, our. Licensed marriage, family therapist, had to think about that acronym. And then our uh, coordinator, our budget coordinator. So you can also see the percentages that those different um. Groups are classified, certificated and management represent uh, on the budget reductions here. So as we move forward and we'll see the total budget reduction is a little bit over two million dollars. We know that our LMFTs um, can be, uh, there's an alternative funding source, so we are not gonna um. They'll be reduced from the general fund, but they're coming out of restricted dollars. So. We take uh, their services to educators and to students will not be impacted. Next, we have uh, two positions, our coordinator, principal, CSI. And coordinator, career technical education. Our goal. Um, for the career technical education position is to look for alternative sources of funding. In the past, we know that that position has received uh, funding outside of the general fund. This year we are using general fund dollars and we're also looking at grant funding for that position. Checking, double checking with Amanda on that. And um, in terms of our coordinator principal for our alternative high schools, um, Carpe Diem and Sonoma. Mountain, we are um, going to host a study session that looks at. Our ter- alternative education programs and then we'll make a determination. How we want to move forward with that position, but again, we are looking at alternatives, uh, funding sources so that money can go back to the general fund. Once we receive those recommendations um, from our budget advisory committee. Um, as a cabinet and in, in conjunction with conversations with superintendent Harris. It's been recommended that we retain um, the point six uh. Full-time equivalent of our visual and performing arts TOSA. And that we also keep our coordinator of communications. So those were two positions that we recommend, that superintendent Harris recommends. That we um, do not reduce. In order to make that two million dollar uh, budget number that we're looking at. We looked at addi- additional positions to be eliminated. So. We looked first at the positions that are currently still COVID funded. Um, the first one was our COVID funded nurse. And this um, was voted on by the budget advisory committee. And it was voted on and they reached a majority, but they did not reach a super majority for that position. Um, the other. Uh, position that we're recommending to be eliminated is a COVID funded floater custodian. And currently that is a vacant position. And then last, we're looking at our gifted and talented identification stipends, subs and testing fees. And that comes to about twenty thousand dollars. So when you look at the numbers. After we made those adjustments, um, classified, uh, about twenty-five percent of the reductions, certificated twenty-three. And management uh, fifty-one. So that um, those are the percentages after um, the superintendent's recommendation. And then again, the Stephen Covey quote. If you don't choose to do it in leadership time upfront. You do it in crises management time down the road and that is something we don't want to do. So that is um. The overview of what we're recommending, but I'm going to also turn it over. I'm going to start with um. Uh. Jason Sutter to talk about our PAC secretary and just a little bit of context there. Um, I'm going to then have Amanda talk a little bit about um. The process, thank you very much. And Esmeralda is going to talk about the, the COVID funded nurse position and Tony will. Have whatever he's going to say about this process, so. I'm going to let you all take it over. And decide how you want to start.
All right, so um. There were a couple of um, of positions that are, that were um, at sites specifically. The um, secretary of, we had secretary position from Pax McKinley and we had two, uh, one point oh, um, combined. Student advisor from Pen Grove and uh, Mary Collins. And I think that, that those all reached a super majority and with the budget advisory committee. And I think. The thinking about this, the, the group was very thoughtful about, we've added a lot of positions that we think are very valuable. And so where do we look for places where we can do some reductions and make some hard choices? I know that um. That the, when we looked at all the staffing across the schools, we did notice that M- McKinley PACS had. Um, two point five uh, FTE in the front office where most of the other schools have one point five FTE in the front office. Including some schools that are very equivalent in um. In enrollment numbers, um, McKinley PACS does have two uh, separate schools. Um, when, when we have other schools that are similar such as McDowell that have a similar format. So I think they were weighing all those things out and looking for ways to keep the administrative support and the TOSA support at those sites. And that was m- my, I think how that group got to that. Decision around those choices was looking at. The fu- the staffing across the district and the intent to try and keep the extra support that we've added at those, at those schools. So. Any questions on, on that particular item? Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, I wanted to start by thanking. The budget advisory committee, we do have members in the audience and um. For their hard work, what they put into this. I felt the same way last year when they were tasked with the same thing. Um, the, the questions that were asked, the dedication of the team and their willingness, we. As we were originally supposed to meet two times in January. For an hour to ninety minutes and we ended up with four meetings and. One of those was over two hours long because they really. Um, the whole committee wanted to take the time to understand um. The financial picture of the district, um, the additional positions, not only COVID funded positions, but what positions have been. Added district wide and really have the conversation at small group and large group. To deliberate and one of the things that um, was apparent from the very beginning was the goal of super majority. Um, and it felt like at the very first voting meeting, a very large task and I think Jason and I were like. Wow, like that's, that's huge. And the fact that we were able to end. The last meeting where they had super majority or consensus. On every position that was brought forward to superintendent and cabinet was huge. So um. Just wanted to thank them and know that a lot of thought and um, I think there. There were no questions left. Unasked, like they looked at it from every position. They asked if there were things outside of. Um, staffing that the district could eliminate and really. Looked at it holistically in a large picture and as Jason said, wanted to make sure that. The, what was being eliminated from the budget, like there, there was reasoning behind it and. Some sort of not equity, but because we have additional support. Can we reduce rather than just saying, let's take it all from this school? Like that was never the conversation. And we didn't have, we had many different. Uh, schools involved, um, but we didn't have. A voice for every single school and you, you wouldn't even know that as part of the conversation, like it was really looked at as a district of, as a whole.
Okay, I'll talk about the uh, COVID uh, funded nurse. So um. The one point oh FTE that's being recommended um, to be cut um, was an increase through the COVID funds, obviously. Um, so this would take us back to our staffing model from the nineteen-twenty school year before um, the pandemic. Um, we are continuing to look for funding sources, additional funding sources to potentially support the rehiring. Of the fourth nurse, um, and we're working with our labor partners um, to work on enhanced staffing to. For the day-to-day um, oversight, enhanced support for our stu- our medically fragile students um, at our school sites.
Um, I think, you know, again, I, I wasn't as involved with the process, but uh, the, the process, you know, reverberates across our entire district and it impacts. All of us uh, in different ways. And so I, I, I don't envy the burden that um, you know, Amanda and Jason and the committee and. You know, has to, has to uh, deal with and address as we, we look ahead of, to how do we. May remain Sullivan in our, you know, fiscally. Um, and that being said, I, I do hope that, you know, um, I know they're, they're positions, but they're also people and that we. Do our best to, to find ways, um, you know, to. To mitigate as much as we can and support those that have done tremendous amount of work, um, um. And uh, in, in some cases irreplaceable, uh, the work that they've done to, to move our district a- ahead and advances ahead. Uh, I do like, you know, want to touch base on, you know, the. The, some of the reasons why we're, we want to ma- remain or maintain our communications coordinator. We've had that position since twenty sixteen. Um, it was a class, classified position uh, up until twenty twenty-two when the position was shifted. To certificated management position to really be responsive. To, you know, what was happening at our sites post pandemic, um, addressing some of the challenges with uh, new uh. Uh, school leaders and giving them, you know, additional mentorship and support. In addition to streamlining communications with our families and our students and our staff in a responsive, timely uh, way, um. And having someone with the, that kind of deep administrative experience, um, being in, in the schools and leading schools. Uh, really helps um, get the nuances around how those communications work on top of a lot of things that we're doing to impact. Uh, and then retain and, and increase our enrollment. Or seem to be um, important pieces that uh, would be very challenging for us to let go of. And we, you know, with our VAPA uh, co- coordinator, that was a plan the committee had put together um, a few years ago. Uh, and to unwind that plan, uh, and to redo the whole thing again. Uh, I think would uh, be a disservice to the arts and music that uh, we spent so much time. Really trying to maintain and grow as a part of, uh, you know, our district goals and initiatives around arts and music.
All right, I'm going to get us to public comment before we ask all of the questions. I know we. Have burning. Um, so I have. Six public comments right now, so everyone will get three minutes. Please bring up any cards that you have. If you have any. Public comment cards regarding the budget reduction, uh, we may have to do a little bit of math. To fit everybody in twenty minutes if there are more comments. I'll, if, even if there's just one, I'll give everyone three minutes still. Twenty-one versus twenty is okay. All right. So first up, we'll take Genevieve, please.
Hello. I've been asked to read two statements from two nurses that are not able to do their own statements, so. And I'll go as fast as I can. Statement to the public city schools board of. Board regarding nurse reduction. Dear Superintendent Harris and Acting Superintendent. Carla Mango. Members of the board and cabinet, my name. I'm reading for Kristen Bianchi. I am one of the four dedicated school nurses serving the students of Petaluma City Schools. I am here tonight to stress how critical it is. That we maintain all four of our nursing positions. I have been a school nurse for twenty years and joined PCS in twenty twenty. When there were only three nurses at that time. I was responsible for Casa Grande, Sonoma Mountain, McDowell, McNear and Valley Vista initially, during distant learning. This was manageable. But when the students returned to campus. The real, the reality became clear, three nurses were simply not enough to meet the growing health needs of our students. The addition of the fourth nurse initially funded through COVID relief transformed our ability to provide care. It allowed me to be on site at Casa High School four days a week instead of just two. Casa Grande serves, serves sixteen hundred to seventeen hundred students, yet before the change. It had the same nursing coverage. As other schools with less than eight hundred students. That math. Did it, doesn't add up. Being present on campus saves lives. Since increasingly my days at Casa Grande, I have personally responded to student overdose. Administering Narcan and performing CPR. I've been part of the majority of ten plus emergency nine-one-one calls. Made each year. I have built relationships with students ensuring that they get the care they need to stay in school rather than being sent home unnecessarily. The work we do as school nurses is just not about bandages and ice packs. We are frontline responders to medical crises. We are lifelines for students with chronic conditions. We are trusted adults. And if there's a question about that, we can answer that, who help keep kids healthy, safe and learning. Reducing our team, our team back to three nurses would be a dangerous step backward. The health needs of our students have only increased post-COVID. Removing the fourth nurse would stretch us too thin. Putting students at risk and diminishing the care they deserve.
You have about fifteen seconds.
For me? Fifteen seconds? All right, the decision to eliminate one full-time RN nurse from already small team of our four significantly impact the health. That was fun. Anyways. I think you guys know what we're talking about. And I appreciate Esmeralda that you will consider rehiring. And not letting go of our nurse.
Thank you. All right, Amanda, up next.
Hi. All right, um, I'm Amanda Del Benny and um. I have two sons um, at Petaluma City Schools. And my younger son has type one. I have two sons, um, at Petaluma City Schools and my younger son has type one diabetes. Um, I also work for Petaluma City Schools. So I am the TDP, the Trained Diabetes Person at Mary Collins at Cherry Valley. I love my job. I, um, I oversee the care of four students with type one diabetes. Three of those students, um, are primary full-assistance age students. One is an independent, um, secondary age student. And my day is spent ensuring that they are safe at school, um, that their blood sugar doesn't drop during PE and they have a seizure or pass out and it becomes an emergency situation. Um, and I am one of five TDPs in our district. There are four at primary locations and one at a secondary location. And believe it or not, not a lot of people want to sub for me. The only people who can sub for me are people who are trained to do so, and those are school nurses. Um, we have four right now, and I am here to wholeheartedly advocate that you fund and keep the fourth nurse. I know budgets are hard. I can't imagine your job. But if I'm not on campus, someone has to be there with the four students that I care for legally, ADA, someone has to be there. That means if I'm ill, that means if I go on a field trip with one of my four students, Dana Rodriguez, who oversees my school site, has to ensure those students are safe. And last year, my husband had a major surgery and I was out on leave for a month. And Nurse Dana and Nurse Monica, our fourth nurse, shifted around their schedules and did everything to ensure that the students at my site were safe and cared for. Pre-pandemic, we had one student in primary grades with type one diabetes. Now, in 2025, post-pandemic, we have ten. We have seventeen in secondary schools. We had fourteen before. Um, those ten students have to have everyone or have to have someone, pardon me, with them every minute managing their type one, every minute of their school day. I'm honored that that's my job and I am honored that these people behind me support me when I can't be there. We need them. So I am urging you, I am begging you, as a parent of someone with type one diabetes and student with type one diabetes, who trusts our district to do the right thing and as a coworker of yours, a colleague, support me, support us in taking care of all of our students.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Monica, up next.
I promise not to pass out from fear. Public speaking is not what I signed up to do as a nurse. Um, my name is Monica Carvalho. I'm a PCS school nurse and a parent here at PCS. I'm here tonight to express my deep concern over the proposed budget cuts to eliminate one full-time RN, a decision that jeopardizes the health and safety of all PCS students, especially those with disabilities. While this reduction aims to revert staffing to pre-COVID levels, our district's health landscape has drastically changed. The most alarming shift is the surge in type one diabetes or T1D. Uh, in the 2018, 2019 school year, PCS had only one elementary student with T1D. Today, the number has skyrocketed to ten, reflecting a global post-COVID trend. These students require constant specialized care and PCS is legally obligated to provide it under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Currently, only school nurses can substitute for our TDPs. And by the way, Amanda is the only one that did not require multiple weeks of training because she is already a parent of a child with type one diabetes. So her training was much more simplified. The other TDPs are laypeople that we are training, that we are supporting constantly. My TDPs, I am in constant communication with all day long over phone and text. And I'm watching those students remotely, their blood sugar all day long, even when I'm homesick, because there's nobody to cover me. This year alone, I've personally covered diabetes care nearly fifty times in just the first one hundred days of school. The nurse for Cherry Valley and Grant covered a similar number of days. There have been occasions when untrained staff has been left to manage diabetes care only with the nurses' help by phone, an incredibly unsafe situation. Even this, even with our current four nurses. Reducing staff further increases the risk for inadequate care, legal liability and compromised student safety. We are already stretched thin. We work extra hours. We work through illness. I've had to bring my own child to school sick to administer insulin to a student without a pump. I've had to have family, uh, not family members, friends, watch my own daughter with strep throat so I could go to school and cover diabetes care all day. So those students could attend school because there was nobody to cover my schools and students. What happens when three nurses are left to cover all five TDPs? In the past year, we've had multiple days when three or more TDPs were out at the same time. When a school nurse covers elementary school diabetes care, we are on-site all day, which results in other sites going without a nurse, creates care challenges for students at different sites.
You have about fifteen seconds.
Requiring medical procedures such as G-tube beatings and catheterizations. How will the district manage the care gap that will be created with only three district nurses? Will students be forced to stay home?
Thank you. All right, Becky?
Hey there. My name's Becky and I'm the mother of a type one diabetes student. Um, he's in third grade. My son, when he was in first grade, the day after the mask came down in school contacted COVID. And after COVID, um, about three to a month later, he became a type one diabetic. As you've heard from these amazing nurses that are my life source, um, he can't be in school without someone monitoring his bu-, blood sugar because his, you know, insulin could actually bring him into a life-threatening situation. So it's just baffling to me that you can find money in your budget to hire ex-police to be on every campus every day. And you can't think about real safety, which is actually having a nurse, for nurses between, you know, thousands of students. COVID is not over, you know? In fact, this winter is, is insane with all the illnesses going around. My idea of safety for my student, all the diabetic students, all students, asthma, all these different conditions, is having trained nurses in schools, not having trained ex-police. And, um, why can't we cut, you know, communications budgets down? Why can't we actually prioritize what keeps people healthy? So that's just one thing that I'm thinking about here as a parent of a kid that needs extra support and is actually able to get that support from the American Disabilities Act. You know, it's, it's just, um, it's just, you know, it puts us all in a really hard situation. Like honestly, how can I safely send my child to school if he doesn't have someone there looking out for him? You know, that, I mean, that's his legal right. But if Amanda's gone and if Dana has twenty-five-hundred students in her jurdis-, jurisdiction, what am I supposed to do? You know, like, I can't send him to school. So it just, it just puts us all in a really hard place. And I know I'm not the only person and let's pray that no more children become diabetic because of COVID. But, you know, we just have to look at the realities of, of our present situation and our public health situation. So I'm really hoping that we can either fund this position somehow with, you know, other funds, or we can really think about where we're cutting out, you know, the support. Thanks.
Thank you. And next up, Sandra.
Please don't interrupt my meeting or I'll have to adjourn until there's no disruption. Please continue. Please start with me. What's a Brown Act violation? With who? Exact-, no. Please don't interrupt my meeting or I will adjourn. Don't tell me what, you know what? We will adjourn this meeting for five minutes. I'm sorry, Sandra. I'm sorry, public. Beaming this meeting at six-thirty and resume public comment with Sandra Larson.
I'm old school. I printed mine out. I'm Sandra Larson, longtime resident of Petaluma, president of the Petaluma Federation of Teachers. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the three Petaluma Federation of Teachers Budget Committee members, Tammy Elliott, Todd Siders and myself. We were deeply disappointed with the cabinet and the board's apparent lack of faith in the budget committee's recommendation process. The budget committee was entrusted with the difficult task of making cuts to our members and staff. The process was painful but collegial. The decisions did not come easy and required many discussions and thought. Yet despite the time and the work that went into the budget committee's recommendations, we find ourselves in the same position we were in last year. One more key recommendations, once more key recommendations were discarded, leaving us with a sense of disappointment and frustration. We were always clear that cabinet would make the final recommendation to the board. Still, we hope there would be respect for the committee's recommendations, especially those with a supermajority. We acknowledge that recommendations are not the same as fact. We understand there was no guarantee they'd be accepted. However, when a group representing the public, classified, certified and administrative personnel are ignored twice, this happened last year as well, we are left wondering what is the purpose of the committee? There was no effort made by cabinet to have a dialogue with the budget committee so that they could understand why our recommendations, so that we could understand why our recommendations were being ignored. The budget committee's work and recommendations are being ignored again. As a committee, we unanimously agreed that our first and foremost priority was to preserve student-facing jobs. The failure of the cabinet to uphold these, this philosophy not only undermines trust, but also questions the accountability of PCS's funding. PCS has reported repeatedly sought public funds. How can we justify this if PCS leadership continues to allocate funds for administrative positions against the will of the public and the budget committee members? On a side note, I'm glad that Superintendent Harris was involved in this. Since he has left for his twenty percent, there has been zero contact with the Petaluma Federation of Teachers. So we don't feel hur-, feel hurt by that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Katie Gill.
All right, my name's Katie Gill. I'm a teacher at PAX and I have two students at McKinley. I'm here to talk about Nurse Monica, one of the four PCS nurses, and our full-time bilingual secretary, Ms. Carmen, which oddly is listed as the PAX secretary on this, um, list of budget cuts. But she's truly our bilingual secretary for our McKinley and PAX school, which is often referred to as a TK eight school. Um, but in this sense, we're suddenly two schools, um, and now she's up for budget cuts. Um, our school is forty-seven percent Spanish-speaking at McKinley and twenty-nine percent Spanish pe-, speaking at PAX. We are nearing five hundred kids. Taking Carmen, um, from our office will cause us to have one point five secretaries and it'll leave us half of our day without a bilingual secretary for a lot of our families. Um, when we look at equity and we look at numbers, our site has more students than other sites that are now going to have more secretaries than us, um, which doesn't seem equitable. Um, when we look at Nurse Carmen, I think, or not, not Nurse Carmen, Nurse Monica, um, if we look at our ratios of nurses, we have one ra-, one nurse for every one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six students, and it's recommended that we should have one nurse for every seven hundred and fifty. So, um, taking Monica away will be, uh, a detriment to the commitment to wellness that is also on the front page of our district website. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Kathy, please.
Good evening. First of all, let me just, um, thank you for your service and I want to acknowledge the very difficult decision I know that faces you this evening. Um, my name is Kathy Goodacre. I am the CEO for the Career Technical Education Foundation. Our organization has a deep history of supporting and partnering with Petaluma City Schools as we work to enhance CTE programs and expand career-connected learning for your students. Over the past few years, we have partnered extensively with Petaluma City Schools, along with two other districts through the New School Model Initiative. Dan Osterman, in his role as college and career pathway coordinator, has been essential to this work, helping us redesign the secondary school experience to prioritize integrated, relevant career pathways. Our investment in these pathway models has totaled over four hundred thousand dollars for PCS since 2021, thanks to the support from the Peter E. Haas Junior Fund and Congressman Huffman. Petaluma City Schools' commitment to this work aligns perfectly with the statewide CTE movement, exemplified by hundreds of millions of dollars allocated through programs like your K-12 Strong Workforce, CTIG, CCAP and the Golden State Pathway Program. And I know it mirrors your own LCAP priority for college and career readiness. I am deeply concerned by the prospect of this position being cut by this district. Our investment alone has yielded a tenfold return with over four million dollars being secured for your district through aligned funding sources, all driven by Dan Osterman. It's difficult to believe that this position would not be prioritized and fully funded, given these grant resources. I'm also surprised to be just learning of this possibility. As had we known that the district was not making a long-term commitment to this position, we would certainly have been available to meet with your leadership to strategize a way forward. How will this critical work continue? Who will manage the deliverables that are promised through these grants? Eliminating this position would be a major setback for Petaluma City Schools, especially as other districts in the county are fully committing to these integrated pathway models. Dan has been a driving force in these countywide efforts and recognizes a key contributor to pathway design, implementation and employer engagement. We cannot afford to lose his vision and dedication. We cannot afford to lose the commitment of this district to career pathways through its investment in the important people who are driving this work forward. I urge this district to reconsider this decision and ensure that Petaluma students do not fall behind as this vital work progresses across the county and the state. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Lori.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm going to just state that I am in opposition of two of the cuts. And then I'm going to read a letter that I have sent to almost everyone in this room, but I'd like it to be available for public comment as well. So I strongly feel like the secretary position should not be cut. It's not a PAX secretary. It's the second secretary at McKinley. And if any one of you have been in that office, you know that they need, they fully need that second secretary. Um, secondly, I am in opposition of cutting Nurse Monica's position. Um, as one of four nurses at Petaluma City Schools, the numbers that Katie talked about, the ratio will make it even more, um, nerve-wracking for parents like me. So here's my letter that I sent. Um, it has recently come to my attention that the district is considering cutting back on nursing staff within the PCS elementary school system. I sincerely hope that none of you have a child with life-threatening medical needs. And if you do, I'm hopeful that your school has the nursing staff to support him or her. I would imagine none of you have a child with serious medical needs in the Petaluma City School elementary system. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a consideration to remove one of the four full-time nurses for the entire district. Our school nurse Monica serves three elementary schools on different school schedules and is constantly in demand with both onsite needs and with phone calls coming in from the other two schools. I see her in action. She's amazing. She is capable and she is very, very busy. My son Will was diagnosed with type one diabetes on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and because of the incredible and consistent nursing staff at McKinley, along with an aide, and he's on his third aide right now, he is able to stay medically safe and in school each day. and he's on his third aide right now, he is able to stay medically safe and in school each day. As the situation stands, I know Monica has her hands full at all times and it makes my stomach drop to think we could have a situation next year where a nurse is split between even more than three schools. Will is thriving at McKinley, in large part due to Monica's consistency, knowledge of his condition, her relationship with his teachers, and with all of the staff onsite at school. I've been a parent within Petaluma City Schools for 11 years and I've spent a good deal of time volunteering on campus. Each time I volunteer, I check in at the office at every school I've been a part of, Cherry Valley, McKinley, PAX, Petaluma High, and Kennelworth. I cannot imagine how any school secretary is able to get his, her, or his task completed. Last month, I went to Valley Vista to pick up the art box. I had a short conversation with the amazing secretary that's also in this room. And within five minutes, a kiddo was in the office crying from an incident during recess. She was pulled away from her job. There was no nurse onsite. And so having a nurse onsite one to two days per week is paramount and reducing the nursing staff not only hurts our medically unstable kids, but also every single kid and child in Petaluma City Schools, the office staff, and our teachers.
You have about 15 seconds.
Reducing the nursing staff at Petaluma City Schools would be a huge mistake. It will put all of our children at risk and especially children like Will who have life or death decisions to make each and every day. Please reconsider your budget cuts.
Thank you. Okay. And then I have a card from Andy. It says 17. I'm guessing you mean item 17, which we've already passed. But if you have public comment on budget reduction or board meeting dates, I'll take it.
Yeah, the budget. I didn't know which item it was. It was hard to find.
You're good. Don't worry.
It was hard to find the agenda online. So Andy Schrader, I was on your budget advisory committee and we spent the last three months going through this and giving you lots of options. And it was hard. And behind each of these, of these positions is a human being and we understand that. I'm here tonight because I think that removing the college and career pathways coordinator would be like guiding our students through their entire education system and then yanking the bridge away at the last second. This position has actually brought in a lot of money into the district, a lot of really important attention. And I think it's important to not remove that one at the last minute. We really need to get our kids into jobs rather than into people's basements where they're sitting there on their phones. So this is super important and the students deserve guidance and this position needs to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your public comments. And we'll go back to our discussion about recommendations for budget reduction. Do any of my fellow trustees have questions? Go for it.
I'm wondering if we can use the same restricted portion of the budget for the nurse as we're doing for LMFTs, if that's a possibility at all.
Great. Excuse me. Great question. One of the LFTs is being funded by a grant at McDowell. And the second change in the LMFT is we receive Medi-Cal dollars through our partnership with, we have individuals who bill and receive those funds. So the LMFT does qualify for that specifically. In the committee, it was discussed, though the nurses bill hours, they do not receive funding. So that specific position does not qualify. It's very, it's a pretty restricted source of funding.
I'm also, last, I'm also concerned in what we just voted on as far as saving certain credentials. We're saving people with CLAD, BCLAD, ELD credentials. And so I think on the classified side, it would really be doing a disservice to eliminate anyone, anyone who, who is fluent in Spanish. So those are my two comments.
Kayla. Amanda, so you just mentioned the LMFT. How many LMFTs are funded through the general funds?
Six.
And we have one that is tapping into the Medi-Cal special fund?
Sorry, seven currently. Okay, sorry. Seven. One has moved and then the second one will move into the Medi-Cal funding on July 1.
Okay. Is there additional room for another LMFT to move into that funding source, freeing up general fund dollars for another position?
So at our last meeting, the Medi-Cal committee in the budget, there was about $1.2 million. That's a little over $800,000 of carryover and an ongoing revenue source of about $350,000 each year. So we could, there is room to support an additional LMFT.
Can we look into that? I know that we cannot make a final decision on that because of the subcommittee. But that seems like an additional way to, two birds with one stone. And let's make sure that we can, again, tap into all the resources, ongoing funds. And so, thank you to my colleague for bringing this up and leave it at that for right now.
Kind of along those lines, looking at keeping the VAPA TOSA, which I do think is super valuable. Is there any way that that funding would fit into the elementary parcel tax money and fit in in line with that in a way to free up more general fund money for a nurse or for a secretary?
Currently, the VAPA TOSA is charged to our Arts and Music Discretionary Block Grant. And as Tony was speaking, it's built into that plan. We have to have that for those dollars. The Arts and Music Discretionary Block Grant does have quite a, it's quite unrestricted restricted funding. So for lack of a better term, but the language in the new parcel tax does allow for VAPA positions.
And isn't Prop 28 also part of that funding as well?
Yes, Prop 28 is included in the overall plan and as allowable.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is that even if we freed up, used parcel tax funding for VAPA, it wouldn't free up $75,000 that we could use towards a nurse necessarily.
Yes, I think this brings up a great point. When we started the discussion, just to back up a little bit, when the Budget Advisory Committee met last year, they were given only the list of COVID or additional temporary funded positions to make the decision from. This past year, we have opened it up and we had the opportunity to talk about all district positions. So the difference is, is that every recommendation that was made by the committee is not actually coming out of the general fund unrestricted. There are restricted pots of money. CTE is an example. The VAPA is an example of that. So what the, the task really is for the business department, once these decisions are made, is to look at our budget as a whole to see where if we reallocate staffing to different restricted dollars to then free up the general fund. So that would be available with the VAPA and with other positions. It's really just looking to reallocate in order to maintain our unrestricted general funds.
I'm confused. So the, the CTE coordinator is coming out of a restricted budget, not the general fund?
That's a great question. So last year, there was grant funding for half of the CTE outside of the current grants that we have that went away last year. So we have been, right now, that position is charged to CTIG, which is restricted. But it also has a lot of other allowable uses for it. So this is one thing that the committee talked a lot about, like really going into details, understanding like when there are restricted fundings involved. So it wasn't just about eliminating a position. It was figuring out how to take other things that are happening within our budget that are not being currently charged to restricted funds. So what the recommendation of the committee was is if this was eliminated from CTIG, sections at our comprehensive high schools and secondaries can then be allocated for a cost savings that way. So it's really been, a lot of these positions that we are discussing do not come out of the unrestricted general fund.
I have a question more along the lines of the process. I know last year, like you were saying, we were just looking at the COVID-funded jobs. But it looks like this year, some of those COVID-funded jobs were not included in the budget cuts. So then what is the plan for continuing to fund those? Like, let's say we're able to find an outside funding source for CTE and then for the nurse. If, since this was COVID funds originally, then how do we plan on continuing to fund that? So we don't run into this every single year?
So unfortunately, anytime that we use any sort of district carryover outside grants, one-time funding that have an end date, this, we're prolonging the situation. So we may be able to cover positions, numerous positions for an additional year or one or two positions for a couple of years. But we ultimately will be back when those funding sources run out in our first interim, in our adopted budget and our first interim. It has always been $2 million of cuts in this year and an additional $600,000 in next year. So we are ready, next year for the following year, excuse me. So this is, it was, we made the decision, we had $7 million of positions added, doing the, the slow burn and continuing positions for as long as possible. So this, any decision outside of the $2 million is, if the $2 million is not reduced, is prolonging it. But the thought is, is that if we have a COVID-funded position, that the, the will is to keep that position by eliminating a different position. So we will use, say we wanted to keep the floater custodian position. And what we did, what we could have done then is, well, we want to keep this position, but we can eliminate the coordinator of budget and accounting. That position has been in our budget for over five years. So by eliminating that position, we've now freed up ongoing dollars because those were built into our multi-year projections.
So the only way to continue funding is to eliminate another job that has ongoing funding?
Yes, for a long term.
Okay. And then can the parcel tax be used for any of these? For any, just any of the positions at all that were for being cut?
I'm just going to briefly look at the list so I don't misspeak. I would have to look, read the language. But I, there's a good chance that possibly the secretary or the student advisors would, no administrative salary. So none of our management positions. Potentially the nurse, I would really, I, I cannot clearly say right now of that, but we would be limited, limited to some of the classified or certificated positions that are on the list.
Amanda, how many jobs, which are, like you just said, the, the budget person, it's been for five years. Are there any more jobs like that where no, where it's on the books, but nobody's filled that position?
So I want to be clear, that position was filled until recently. It has not been vacant for five years. Yes, that is something that we are constantly looking at and we talk about elimination through attrition. We worked with, one of the requests of the Budget Advisory Committee was for us to talk to site administrators and department heads to see if there was anything that they could live without. And that list is, is thin. From that list came, you know, the rationale for the mechanic helpers. We have a brand-new electric fleet. We have a need for bus drivers. The picture may be different in three to five years when those are no longer under warranty. So we've been consistently, I would say even in last fiscal year, looking at all of those things, trying to reduce. We were able, originally this ask was going to be, because we added some positions at the end of the year last year. We anticipated this to be $2.2 million originally. And through attrition of other positions, we were able to reduce it down to $2 million. So that's something we're constantly looking at.
Thank you. I want to bring this back just at a high level. I want to take time to thank the advisory committee members for all their time and effort and seriousness that they put into their recommendations. You know, it is unique to have, you know, teachers, classified staff, the principals and parents all working together and to reach super majorities on very difficult questions. So I just want to say again, thank you and we take your recommendations extremely serious. I also want to point out that, you know, we, the board learned about the recommendations at the same time as the public, last, last Thursday. And so we are digesting the recommendations as well. And, you know, I want to thank Ms. Goodacre coming down from Santa Rosa. I thank you for all the work that you do through the CTE Foundation. I was lucky enough to work with Tony Krab this last, this last fall. And he is, he's becoming a good friend. I want to, I see that we have a note in the slide that the CTE position, it will be eliminated, the recommendation, but alternative sources are being investigated. Can you go into that a little bit more? And what are the next steps into, to investigate funding for those positions?
Well, I mean, so we can look at other grants, potential grants that we, we could pursue or currently have. In addition, we could request greater funds through the CTIG. Currently, I think we get about a half a million dollars from CTIG with a, with a mat, we have to do a two-to-one match. But I think currently we could potentially absorb more of the CTIG funds, because I think our current match can exceed or allows us to have more CTIG funds. But I think the, it's hard, that's hard to know because we've got to go through the application and it's not really up to us how much we'll get allocated. So I think it's really taking the time to explore what other opportunities, whether it's also potentially through our LCAP to support our, you know, college and career goals and seeing if that could be a possibility as well. So there's multiple potential funding sources that we would need to explore, but, but we would just need time for that.
Thank you, Tony.
Go for it.
So I had another question about the process. I know, again, we, last year when we looked at just COVID jobs, this year, we looked at every job. Is that correct? So what was the process of the jobs? Like, for example, the PAX secretary, the mechanics helper, I know you said that, since the cars are under warranty, just one student advisor, even though we originally hired 12. How was the decision made on not putting more of the COVID jobs, funded jobs up there and then including jobs that were not COVID-funded? What was the Budget Advisory Committee's process for that?
So throughout the process, one of the things that was clear from the whole committee is that they wanted to keep the eliminations as far away from students as possible. When you do that, you automatically look at your operations and places like the, the district office removed from the students. So it wasn't a matter of having a vote on day one. Like I said, there were a lot of requests with a lot of information. I think one of the tools that maybe the committee found, I think one of the tools that maybe the committee found, I found it helpful. Maybe they didn't, was we had a spreadsheet that was um broken up by, and it was it was like 11 pages, but it was broken up by department and site. Um, where we were in the 1920 school year, pre-pandemic staffing levels versus where we are currently staffed. And then we did have the enrollment for each of those years because some of our sites have really fluctuated enrollment. So that really guided a lot of the conversation of over the last five years. You know, we talked about specific COVID funded positions. Those were brought on as temporary for very specific dollars, different grants, but that really gave them the opportunity of why um, we'll talk about the PACs McKinley secretary is. Um, when looking at this list, um, most of our sites had 1.5 F T E of office support. And PACs had um 2.5. So that started the conversation there. The other piece that I think the committee heard loud and clear after last year um, making the recommendation to eliminate the TOSA positions at the three sites and we brought those back. Um, they asked like, is, if they weren't allowed last year, are they on the table this year? And the answer was, yes, they are. But looking at that and keeping those positions, we had three elementary um schools, elementary slash K eights that um, we're going to, the recommendation was not going to cut those three TOSA positions. But where did they have additional staff? So McKinley PACs was one of those sites um that has the TOSA A P and additional office support. So that's where that vote came from. For the student advisors, um, Mary Collins and Pen Grove both have TOSA's. Mary Collins has a TOSA A P and Pen Grove has a TOSA. Um, so it was to reduce those. So they will still have student advisors. Um, Mary Collins, because they have, their foundation pays for a partial student advisor. They will still actually have one F T E, which is what a lot of our other sites have. And um, Pen Grove, we were luck, we had um two Pen Grove representatives, um, principal Harp and the office secretary. And they, they talked about this and explained how, how the TOSA position worked and if they had to eliminate something. So it was very long conversations for every, every position discussed. And so that's specifically how the secretaries and the student advisors came about. They realized, the committee realized, um, I mean, they would have glad, not gladly. It would have been easiest if we had an additional $2 million here at the district office of staffing that we could have just eliminated. And they realized that. So when they had to go to the students, they looked at how to be least impactful by looking at staffing levels and enrollment.
We talked a little bit just now about the secretary, and I think there's been confusion about like PACs versus McKinley versus PACs McKin- like, can we, and like a concern about a specific employee, can we talk a little bit about how if that 1.0 F T E is eliminated, what that looks like in terms of like staffing and individual staff moving around in seniority and whatnot?
Yeah, so um, so first of all, it's important to recognize like like every position represents a person, but but we are actually talking about positions because there, there's contract and there's bumping and there's seniority and all that. Um, so your question was, can you restate that your question one more time?
I guess it, my understanding is it's not uh, even if we were 100% sure we were going to cut 1.0 F T E from McKinley PACs, we're not 100% sure on who that individual person is because of bumping and seniority and.
Yeah, that's true. And, and, and um the, the position, the, the position that's identified is, is a, is a secretary position. It's not a bilingual secretary position. It is, uh, you know, there are many positions that are not required to be bilingual, but we have the benefit of having people that are bilingual and get a stipend for that as opposed to, there are some positions that are strictly bilingual, like it must be, this is, this is, this position is a secretary position. Um, and the, I, you were asking a little bit about, if I understood you right, why it's coded as, as PACs. I know that um, the gen- genesis of this position was recognizing that um, the needs of PACs um, were, were greater and adding some additional support into the office um, was the rationale when Matthew first brought that forward. Um, so that's why it is labeled that way in the budget. But if you've been to McKinley PACs, like it's an office and everyone in there is working for all the kids. So yeah, on the books, certainly it's labeled that way, but we know that in, in reality, that's not how any of those positions operate, that they're only dealing with one school or the other school. Um, so I think that the way it's listed is more about how it's budgeted than in reality, how they serve, how they serve the school.
Thank you. Did you have another question about that? Um, so we chose not to um eliminate the TOSA's. Were the TOSA's, the elementary TOSA's, were those COVID funded as well?
They were addition, additionally, COVID funded. Last year, um the board elected to no longer allow carryover. And so it freed up what generally was general fund dollars and those positions lie there now. So originally, it could have been, if that was a temp, that was a temporary
Right.
measure because you only have that um, carryover one time once you spend it. And so now they will be added to the budget by eliminating, if it's 450, I, I don't know that amount off the top of my head, but say it was $400,000. Um, we've reduced $400,000 somewhere else to keep those positions.
But those were originally COVID positions?
Yes.
That we've kept, okay.
Are the TOSA A Ps considered um, certificated or administrative positions?
So um, so we have three of those positions. One of those positions is a strict, strictly a TOSA. That's at our, at our TK six school at Pen Grove, and that's a certificated teacher on special assignment. Um, the other two schools are both TK eight schools. That's um McKinley PACs and Chair, uh, Mary Collins, Cherry Valley. And those are 50% teacher on special assignment and 50% assistant principal. It's one person. So it's one person that, that are, that are, their, their position is split. So they're certificated administrators that are 50% an administrator and 50% um, in a teaching position.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I got one more. So uh, we haven't really talked about it too much, but uh, one of the recommended uh adjustments by the, the back committee was the uh communications coordinator. Uh, can you go into when this position was created? And when did it become upper management?
Um, and, and maybe Jason has uh more deeper background, but uh, my understanding, it's been around since 2016. It was a a classified position and in 2022, it um converted to a management position. But it's been, a communication coordinator has been around for quite a while.
Okay. Um, what was the reasoning behind the, the backs? It was super majority vote, correct?
Yes.
What was the reasoning behind the recommendation to uh have this position be recommended for elimination?
Um, I, I can only, I can I would probably say that, that, that it was one of the initial the way the process worked was we had a lot of discussion and we actually started with all the COVID positions, like looking at those and then we expanded our discussions. We started with um, uh, the groups talking about, like forming groups that would talk about some ideas of, of what they wanted to cut and bring those forward. And we started a list. Um, there wasn't uh, a ton of discussion about specifically why this one needs to be cut or that one needs to be cut. But my, my feeling was that the committee's first look was a lot of the first first takes were the positions that were farthest from student. Like as Amanda said earlier, like that was a sentiment of the group was trying to make cuts farthest away from students as possible. And so my inference on, on the rationale was, was that that was a fa- position farther away from, from students cert- directly serving students. And it was one, um, it was one of the, the first, first kind of cuts, because we did a series of cuts, like we, we, we got a couple of positions and we voted on it. And then we did another cut and we voted on some more and we had some discussion. Um, both of, both of the coordinator positions were discussed early on and, and I think my, unless you, my impression was that the main, the main purpose, the main focus was that they are farther away from students. And that was the, kind of the interest of the group was to make cuts at the, at those locations farther away.
Okay. Um, and then just
It, it was on the, it was at the last meeting when we, when we made the final votes, yes.
All right. And I think just circle back. And so the, the cabinets and superintendent Harris's position, you know, can we go into a little more specific details about why uh, they are, you know, the recommendation is to keep the position?
Um, in regards to the communications coordinator?
Yes.
So um, as I mentioned, in 2022, it was kind of shifted to, it was shifted to the, to um, a certificated management position. Uh, you know, in light of, as we were entering, exiting out of the pandemic, there was a lot of challenges around the the crises that were happening at the school sites and the need to, to be responsive and communicate. And, and uh we also had a lot of new administration and being able to have someone who had, had the administrative background, been a principal, it was a veteran to be able to support uh sites uh and knowing how to communicate um and reaching out to um, um the site principals to, to help guide them through, you know, talking points and, and for example, the Pen Grove uh situation that happened, communication coordinator was critical in, in helping us um navigate that, uh, those challenging times when the, when the kids were evacuated. So in addition to the, the crises, also the me- mentoring and the coaching that was uh, um, uh, much needed as we were dealing with, uh, you know, a lot of uh new administration. Uh, in addition to um, all of the, um, you know, um, uh, working with the media and, and also working with our own social media, working with um, you know, the district office and, and how to upgrade a lot of the um, communication tools that we have and how to streamline a two-way communication with our parents and making sure that the priority with um, with our communication, with our community through surveys or through um, other initiatives that help us um, give input and also uh receive input from our community to help us be more responsive of what we need to do as a, as a district. Yeah, and, and the big piece of the communication corner is working around enrollment, uh, as we were also battling declining enrollment and how do we re, you know, re redesign our narrative around what ped- pedantic city schools offer around this S S U promise that you might see. Um, uh, and working with our elementary sites and navigating the Valley Vista enrollment piece uh when we were um, during our merger with the Live Oak. So all those pieces with the new man, with a certificated management um uh, uh, background really helped navigate a lot of those nuances that um, that school sites uh needed uh and the support that the district needed to help navigate those things.
And I'll just add pretty much everything that Tony just said there, like did not happen with the communications coordinator when it wasn't a management position. Um, it was, but yeah, when it was classified, it was mostly doing social media, helping us run our board events, but not talking to the Argus, not talking with the superintendent for hours on the weekend about all the different crises that have come up. So it really has shifted. Um, you know, whether it, you know, whether it, we need to spend $221,000 is what, you know, definitely a conversation worth having, but it has shifted into a very, very different role than it was, even though it has the same title as it did in 2016.
Um, I'm wondering if, so I'm seeing that the reasoning, I think it's on the next slide or the slide after, one more, another one, that one. Um. So under the, the COVID funded nurse, it says recommended for reduction. The elimination of the nurse position was voted on during the budget advisory meeting and reached a majority, but not a super majority. Were there any other positions that reached the majority, but not a super majority that don't appear on this list?
No.
No, okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up on the nurse. Um, there were some statistics read by uh some of the, the public comments. I- is that true that we have seen uh, jumping uh, students with type one diabetes from pre-pandemic to current?
That is correct.
So, okay, so the numbers that are approximately correct that they referenced.
I would be interested at the next meeting or in the meantime, if we could know what the nurse to student ratios are in uh, districts near us, like both our feeder districts and other um, I forgot the word we use is, but districts like us. Uh, okay, the other big ones, the other big ones. Um, and if there were ever a way to maybe, I, I'm just going, making things up on the fly, like split F T E, like split a nurse with old Adobe or something, like is that ever a model we could consider doing is sharing a staff member like that, that's already floating between sites, sharing with a, one of the smaller districts that maybe they don't have the budget for a 1.0 F T E nurse. Um. Just getting creative and weird.
Yeah, it's, I don't know specific to that position, but it is something that we do. We contract with our feeder districts on um, a lot of services, especially around transportation and special education.
Any other questions or any information you all want before the next meeting or to be brought to the next meeting? Any recommendations for the resolution that will include positions to be eliminated?
Yeah, I can start. Um, I do not want to see the nurse position eliminated. Um, I would like to see uh, if we can uh, find uh, ways to tap into the, the uh, medic- Medicare Fund um, and move an additional L M F T position. I believe they are equivalent salaries or rough, you know, approximately. Um, so I believe that is something to where we can utilize that fund as long as, again, we can work that through the, the subcommittee. Uh, I would not be supportive of the budget, eliminating the nurse this time due to uh, the comments from the parents. Um, and I think the increased need in coverage across the district. And I, I don't want to see our numbers increase with the per pupil, uh, per nurse, um, even if our feeder districts are different. Uh, it still is not good enough. And this is, we can do better and we should stay at this better level.
Ryan, I, I agree. I, I don't think cutting a nurse is a very good idea, especially with the spike. And you know, we, kids get sick and it things are really contagious these days and I just don't think we can afford um, to lose a nurse at this point.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, uh, I can, I can go again. Um, so second is, um, we have a tremendous uh ally and resource. Ms. Goodacre came down uh to join us tonight. Uh, can, before our next meeting, can I uh can we schedule a conversation with, with them and uh, with C T Sonoma, uh, the foundation? And see if there is additional, let's say like guidance on what the other funding could be, that we can provide a little bit more clarity or not clarity on, again, where that position's going to go. But I would like to have that conversation. Uh, they came down to ask for it. Uh, we should have it as soon as possible.
Can, can you clarify? So originally you said for us to, you wanted to move another L M F T into the um, Medi-Cal billing and then free that up for a nurse? Um, do we have the funds to do that? Do we know?
There are carryover funds that would support it for at least one year.
Okay, so that would be a one year. So then are you just hoping to know that for this year or like for ongoing, then how we would keep them? Or you just want to look at that again next year when we get to that point?
Well, I am the, the junior member on the board. Uh, I am learning about the different uh pots of money and how they are allocated. Um, and what is ongoing or carryover or one-time money. Uh, I would like to keep the nurse. I would like to keep four nurses at Pedal I would like to keep the nurse. I would like to keep four nurses at Pedal Elementary Schools. I would like to do the best job we can. If we come to that point where there is nothing else we can tap into, we will have that conversation, but until that.
So for this year?
Yeah, for this budget.
Also, we save credentials for certificated. Can we do the same thing for classified? For example, bilingual would have precedence over not bilingual. I'm saying that very clumsily, but you know.
I know. I understand what you're asking. I I can look into that. That's not, we haven't done that in the past. We haven't, we haven't discussed that with our labor partner, with CSEA, and we haven't ever brought resolutions to that effect. But I can look into the possibility of that.
Trustee Quinn, I just want to make sure I understand the direction of the board. So essentially what you're asking for is for us to look for outside funding so that we don't bring the nurse position to the resolution at the next board meeting. And that we talk to the CTE Foundation and which I'm actually meeting with Kathy tomorrow. And we try to strategically look for additional funding sources outside the ones that we currently have in the district to support the CTE coordinator position. Is that correct?
I think the Medi-Cal funding for the LMFT specifically less than like outside funding, but yeah, otherwise, yes, I would say.
Is that direction?
I think so. Is there any other direction anyone wants to?
No, I just want to point out that we had a member of the budget committee come up and say, talk about the CTE position. So that carried a lot of weight with me.
Yeah, I hear that. I mean, I think we can make a justification for every single person's position, just because they didn't come and speak or someone didn't speak on their behalf tonight. So I don't want to, you know, just set aside everyone's job because even though we know that these are positions, there are people in each of these jobs. Yeah, I just, I hear what you're saying, Ryan. And I mean, I think people make a lot of assumptions, but I also have a child that has a medical condition. But I also know that we have to fund this somehow and I'm okay, I guess, with for the next year. But then what do we have a plan to continue funding the nurses? After this, like I don't want to keep doing this every year. So then I would want to know what's our long, what's our long-term plan or are we going to be right back here in a year?
So if we move the an LMFT into the Medi-Cal, that will support. So there's already been one move there. So the $350,000 that is received annual, you cannot support two. So we're limited to carryover. What that will do, just to be perfectly clear, is that makes one of the LMFT positions that will run out of funding. It will end up with the end date. If the nurse isn't then charged to the general fund, the nurse will continue without going through this process again. So just to be mindful of that.
So so then we're basically deciding if we want to keep a nurse long-term funding or an LMFT long-term funding. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We could do it, the LMFT like as a in the budget as a temporary for one year. And then for now for multi-year projections, then move that position back into the general unrestricted dollars and eliminate the nurse for multi-year projections. So we do have that type of play.
I mean, when I look at the the survey feedback, the thing that came back as the highest was providing mental health support for students along with supporting students with disabilities and ensuring school safety. So the LMFTs did come back as the highest when we spoke to the community. So I I don't, I don't, of course, I want to say both of the positions, but I don't know how I feel about using the funds that are the Medi-Cal funds that are generated by the LMFTs to not use for LMFTs. So I'm wondering if there is a different funding source that we can identify for the nurses.
I can definitely look at our what we anticipate having restricted dollars. One of the other things that we could look at doing is that we receive Title I funds for each of the two districts. And what we do is we have them earmarked by district, but we then do a calculation to determine which of our schools will be our Title I schools in any given year based off of our socio-economically disadvantaged count. And then we allocate specific budgets from Title I to each school site. Schools that are site, site-wide Title I schools. We can use something like the nurse to pay for it. So what we could do is we could fund the nurse out of our Title I funds. And then that nurse would work at specific school sites that have that were site-wide Title I. So that is an option. It would reduce the allocation that is given to each site.
Which would it reduce the allocation by? Because I'm seeing like the the fourth nurse is divided by five schools, so I don't know how much the nurse.
So yeah, so right now, I mean, these are current numbers. So any salary changes we make this year, these numbers, you know, will change relatively soon. But we would take the amount. So let's say.
About 20,000 ish.
Yeah, well, and it depends, like if it was over three sites, we would take the 170 and reduce it by the three. We do historically have carryover in our Title I funds, so they generally are not fully spent each year. So that too, though it has historically been an ongoing source of funding.
Yeah, we don't know.
But we could, yes, they the nurse does qualify. We could move. We could charge the nurse to Title I.
Okay. And then I'm wandering along because Title I does encapsulate a lot of students besides the one with medical needs. So then I just wonder then if, you know, more of the services to Title I students could be potentially done by the nurses as well. I mean, just for me, I would feel more comfortable if we're going to find a funding source, at least that one that's on going. I'm asking you, Ryan, junior board member.
I it's a, I think it's a conversation. We have to right now, I mean, if we come up with new funding sources, like I think with another position, like two, two or three months down the road or we get more clarity on Title I or where the money. But right now, we what we can say is for this next, you know, fiscal year, we can use this source of funds to keep the nurse and while we, you know, and you have my full support on, I do not want to reduce it LMFT as well. And so we can identify the correct funding sources for both positions and get that into alignment with, again, with the community priorities and our priorities.
Olivia, do you have any question?
Comments?
I'm sorry, I missed. Would you prefer that the nurse be moved into Title I or to look at a one-year with the Medi-Cal?
I would prefer Title I. Because even though we cannot count on the federal government, I know that our state superintendent has identified at least that they believe they can cover the title funds at least. And we have that for now, we have that that revenue currently and we have the carryover from it. And then we wouldn't be basically bumping the LMFT from the funding source that they generate with their billing.
So at this point, how many LMFTs are we keeping? And how many have been cut?
So we are keep all of our current LMFTs, we are keeping on two of the positions. We have moved them into extremely restricted funding sources that they previously, we have not used salaries there.
Yeah, I'm in supportive of using Title I if we can, just because we, I mean, as much as we can know anything about the federal government, we know that.
If I wasn't clear, it is allowable, so we can. Okay.
Cool. You have any other thoughts or?
Just a point of clarity, I think, are we all in alignment on keeping the 0.6 FTE TOSA position?
That's that's being paid with restricted funds. Yes. Isn't that restricted?
One of many positions on this list that is currently being paid with restricted funds.
I am.
I think I'm clear on direction. So we will be back. We're going to work with CTE Foundation, meet with Kathy to look for funding, possibly funding for the coordinator of CTE. And we'll move, we'll remove nurses from the resolution that will come to the board and we will fund that nurse position with Title I. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for everyone who participated in the budget advisory and public comment. This is not the official anything. We still have to vote on the resolution next time, but it sounds like we may have a have a way forward. Those were our two discussion and information items. So moving on to future business. Does anyone have any future business, any presentation requests, any, yeah?
The North Bay Security presentation.
Yeah.
I just want to know the scope of the work that they do, especially related to chronic absenteeism and residency verification. But just overall, not just at CASA, but all of our sites. Yeah.
And how much money we're spending on them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other future, future business, anybody?
I asked last time and I'll say it again, I want to hear about math assessments at the secondary level.
Great.
I I brought this up once in a while, but I'd been speaking with our friends at the building trades and they have been in IBW. They've been going to and doing presentations, like a career day or career presentation at several local high schools. They've asked if they can do it at our high school sometime in May. And so I just want to circle back and and figure out if we can find time and resources to provide them on campus.
Yeah, we'll connect them to Dan and Victor and definitely. That would be awesome. Yeah, I don't like hearing that they're going to other schools and not our schools, so we gotta. No, yeah, we can make it as easy as possible for them. Cool. Any other future business? If not, I would adjourn this meeting at 8:33 PM.